Silence your cell phones. Council meetings are also livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. I now call the July 1st, 2025 regular council meeting to order. All councilors are present. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please read the consent minute approval titles.
Approving the minutes of the June 17th, 2025 regular council meeting and the June 17th, 2025 executive session.
Thank you. The Chair entertained a motion to approve the consent minute. Action items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Bond. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Gamroth voting nay.
Oh. It was.
He doesn't like consent.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Chair entertained a motion to approve by minute action. The July 1st, 2025 bills and claims is audited by City Manager Napier. Moved by Counselor Haskins, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Now is the time that we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the council to come forward. This portion of the meeting is dedicated to the public to allow them time to discuss matters of public interest and to voice any concerns. We do ask that you please state your name, direct all questions and comments to the mayor. No personal obscenities or threats will be tolerated. Council will not respond to any personnel matters. These will all be referred to our city manager. Councilors may ask clarifying questions, but if they choose to respond to matters, they will do so during the scheduled council response time following communications from persons present. Presentations will be allowed to five minutes, and there are no time extensions. Please note that public hearings and the ordinances each have their own separate comment periods. Mr. Schriftman.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. In response to Councilmember Pollock's comments at last week's work session, I share with you the following. And I hope I quoted you correctly. "The theory of limited government is not a universal truth. In fact, this role of government has never been the dominant philosophy in any thriving democracy." End of quote. If they were still alive, the founders of our nation would take issue with that statement. Americans have lived in limited government communities for centuries. It is not an illusion. If it was, then I guess that for more than 50 years, I was living a fantasy in a 300-year-old township in Pennsylvania, which has a board of commissioners made up of six Democrats and one Republican, and twice as many registered Democrats as Republicans, hardly a conservative bastion. The township's population is about half of Casper's, and yet their entire budget is just $60 million, of which $50 million is the general fund and the capital fund. $16 million of the township's revenue is listed as department earnings, which most likely is fee income. The township building houses the police department. There is a new state-of-the-art fire station. The roads are in excellent shape despite the constant freezing and thawing in the winter. Many years ago, they started a first-of-its-kind recycling program, which I shared information on with our city manager. There are several beautiful parks, ballfields, and many trails. There are two community swimming pools owned and operated by the residents, and one community pool in a lower-income neighborhood run by the township. A new library was built about six years ago. The municipal golf course was sold to a private company about 10 years ago. The township does not own any businesses. Private businesses are thriving there without special deals from the local government. I agree with Councilmember Pollock that she oversimplified what the conservatives in our community expect from our local government. We want a nice community, but does every benefit need to be derived from government expenditures generated from our tax dollars? There is a big difference between partnering with private businesses and the government owning and operating businesses, which directly competes with the private sector. As discussed in your meetings, all but one of Casper's government-run businesses are operated at loss. Those losses are covered by the taxpayers. With that said, let's have a public debate on the proper role of government in our constitutional republic. I am offering to participate in a one-on-one debate with any member of council willing to engage on this most important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Schriftman? This time?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Oh, you're good.
Thank you, Mr. Schriftman, for your comments. For clarification, what was the Pennsylvania town you were referring to?
Mayor, Councilmember, Upper Dublin Township.
Sorry, one more time, the second word.
Upper Dublin.
Dublin.
There's no Lower Dublin, by the way.
Gotcha.
That's Abington Township.
Good to know. Thank you.
It was incorporated before the Revolutionary War.
Anything, anybody else? Yes, go ahead. Counselor Sweeney, no, sorry about that.
So, thank you, Mayor. So, I also come from Pennsylvania, but I moved out here in 1970. Behind, but keep in pretty close contact, but... So, the way the community I'm from is also in a township within the borough is within that township within, which is Sugar Grove, Pennsylvania. And which within the township and then within the county. Township, the town has its own council. It's only 600 people, very small town. And then township has supervisors, but they are basically in charge of the roads outside of the town. And also, there's a separate sewer system, which the residents pay over $70 a month now just for sewer. They're still on well water. But in the county, it still has oversight. So I'm a little curious as to the borough or the town that you're talking about is directly supervised by the township, not a council directly by the supervisors of the township?
Mayor, Councilmember, it's a first-class township which elects township commissioners from, in that case, seven wards. So one council person is elected from each of the wards, and then they stagger. It's a four-year term. So, and there's other communities around, there's other activities. Every community is a little different, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity to see some other things that other communities have done. And as I said, on the recycling, I did send, and I know council's been talking about that. The program that they started about 25 years ago seems to be working very well. So it's well managed, as Casper is well managed. But my main concern is how many businesses that the city is running. And that's always been a discussion, and I'd be glad to debate any member council on that.
Any other clarifying questions? Yeah, Counselor.
Just one point of clarification. I used the term "limited government" later, saying that I do think it's possible to both have limited government and achieve some of the things that we've been trying to achieve. What I said specifically was that I don't, I invite anybody to show me a place that was paying for only infrastructure and public safety. So my question is, is that how you define limited government?
Mayor, Council, no, it's not.
Okay.
I've never said that. I am in favor of parks, open space. Casper's done a great job with trails. It's some of the other things that are operating at a loss. And as the manager said last time, some of them may not be able to operate as a private business, one being the event center. It's older, it's not attracting all the acts that maybe it could because of the structure. And if we get into that at some point, any capital projects there, I would say, should focus on the structure of, to make the facility more friendly and not aesthetic. The concourse, the bathrooms, the vendors, those kinds of things. That should be the focus. But the problem is, if these are losing revenue, spending more capital on making improvement with the hopes that it's going to generate more revenue could be a problem in the future.
Anything else? Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the council? Hey, how are you?
How are you?
Good. It's good to see you again.
I'm Amber Christianson. I'm with the Casper Celtic Irish Festival, and I wanted to come in one last time because our event is only two weeks away. And we have a full platform of talent that will be featured. We have, but before I get into it, I want to thank the city of Casper for the Casper Impact Grant, Area Impact Grant. We were granted some money from that, and we very much appreciate it. We have, we do have our whiskey tasting. It was a little bit iffy the last time I was here, but we have Tula Mordu, Proper 12, Monkey Shoulder Slain, and Five Farms Irish Cream, all being featured. We have specialty cocktails designed by Backwards Distillery for other non-whiskey beverages. We have Gruner Brothers. We have a food truck called 66 Flavors coming in from South Wyoming. They're not local. There's a couple other events that took all the local ones. But 66 Flavors has agreed to create an Irish-themed menu. So we will have fairly authentic foods as well as some hot dogs available. We still have vendor spaces available. We have, but we have, our ticket sales are already going pretty strong. We have people, tickets sold to Colorado, Nebraska, and even some from Texas. So we're bringing them in from out of state as well as local. Oh, we have, our opening Friday is, the doors open at 5:30 with a double feature concert of Colin Keegan and Sire, which is an Irish rock band. Saturday morning, 9:45 is our opening ceremony. We're hoping to issue an invitation for the mayor to speak if he is interested.
The Saturday?
Saturday, the 19th. We are, we have already established next year's dates because we've learned a lot over the year, and we've been able to look more into what is going on in Casper, but also within the Celtic festivals. And we found what we think is going to be a sweet spot the last weekend in August. So it's going to be somewhere between the 28th and 30th. Last weekend in August, we're hoping to establish that as a yearly date so they can be promoted throughout the country on some websites that list all of the festivals. It's, I'd say it's a sweet spot because earlier in August is two festivals in Montana, and then at the beginning of September is Kansas City and Estes Park, and we can hopefully plug into the Celtic vendors coming through during that time. We don't know yet if it's going to be a Friday, Saturday, the same model that we have this year. We're hoping to grow it to include Sunday. Our turnout this year will determine whether we'll be able to grow next year or if that'll be in the future. And that is, we hope that we will all attend.
And I'll take a look at my schedule, and I'll get back to you guys. How's that sound?
Thank you.
And you said the 19th, 9:45?
9:45, opening ceremonies.
And you want about a two-hour speech?
About five minutes.
And I can do a, I can do a presentation on the wastewater treatment facility, too.
Well, if you throw in some Irish dancing while you're doing it.
Consider it done. I'll take a look, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
And a kiln. Bad Scottish.
A black, black kiln.
Oh, that's right. You can, my bad, my apologies.
Black or gray?
That's right. Yep. Okay, any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So congratulations. I know it was a big feat to pull all of this off and something I really, really had hoped to pull off years ago when we had the Wonder Bar, even though that's a German name, but we were going to convert it and steal it. But so, opening ceremony is the 19th?
Saturday, the 19th.
And what time was that?
9:45.
Okay. Perfect. Then that's a busy weekend. I forget everything that's going on, but crazy.
Yes, which is why we're moving next year.
But a lot going on downtown in particular, so.
Hopefully, while they're downtown, they'll join us for a few hours.
Yes, so.
We do have potentially, they're still trying to make it work. The consulate from San Francisco, the Irish consulate, is trying to have a presence for the opening ceremony as well. But it's getting down to the wire, so fingers crossed, but we'll see.
We're just looking at my schedule. It is on my calendar, so.
Yay.
I'll double-check and make sure that I'm free.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Amber, can you remind us where it's at?
Nicholson, at the Nicholson. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to address the council? Would any councilors like to briefly respond to any of the matters that were brought up to the council at this moment? Yep, Counselor Pollock.
Yeah, I just invite folks to go back to the last meeting and listen to my actual comments. I was really making a point about a fundamentalist view of government, not a limited government. Limited government is quite a broad spectrum of things, could be interpreted in many, many different ways. And what I laid out specifically in my argument was not pointing out the fallacy of a limited government. In fact, I said, as I said later on in my comments, that I think we've demonstrated as a community that limited government can work very well for us, and we can get a lot done even in a limited government format. But, but a fundamentalist view of government that seeks to limit it to the extent that I have heard a lot of rhetoric suggest, I think is, is the, that was the viewpoint that I was drawing people's attention to and suggesting is not a dominant governing philosophy in this country or any other. So, thanks.
Any other feedback? One more to Gipf? All right, moving on. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Established July 15th, 2025 as the public hearing date for consideration of an ordinance approving a rezone of the property located at 711 East Collins, Capitol Hill Edition, Block 40, Lot 1, and Strip adjacent from C2 General Business to C4 Highway Business.
Chair entertained a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing date just read.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance pertaining to the Valley West Park Edition subdivision. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated June 27th, 2025. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication from the Casper Star Tribune dated June 24th, 2025.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, thank you. This ordinance is to approve the vacation replat subdivision agreement and rezone for Valley West Park Edition. This ordinance will allow the applicant to develop the property as an RV and camper park. That's all I have.
Great, thank you.
And as you can see, it's on the screen.
Perfect, thank you. Council will now listen to public comments. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of this ordinance to please approach the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Pat Sullivan, for the property. It can be different for the community, it can be different for the revenue. I see a lot of things out of town, especially. Lots of, I'm for the product.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Any questions for me? Any questions? Yep, go ahead, Counselor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Pat, for being here. Good to see you again.
You, too.
I noticed you've changed up the facial hair since I last saw you. I like it.
Midget wrestling's coming up. I'm the guest referee.
Oh, all right. Cool, cool. Yeah, I was actually really excited about this proposal, especially when we talk about, you know, the struggles with affordable housing and stuff. My guess is more people are going to be kind of living that RV life and stuff like that. I had a couple questions, though, in regards to, I don't know if you already have kind of designs put together for what the RV park would look like, but I'd be interested to see kind of what that layout looks like, if there's any buffers through landscaping or otherwise between the RV park and like the residential neighborhood that it butts up against. I'd be curious what you have in the way of like lighting, noise, or occupancy limits. So just looking for a little bit more details about the plan. It wouldn't surprise me if we heard from some folks in the area. This is just first reading. We hear from almost nobody on the first reading. Second, third reading, we might hear from some folks. And so I would just love to have as much information as possible about kind of what the plan is for the area, what the park's going to look like, what the duration of the residents are going, you know, is it a long-term camping? Is it more short-term transient? Would just love to have some of that information at my disposal for questions I might get from constituents.
Right, yeah. And so per your guys' rules, long-term camping is not allowed. So it'd be, you know, week to 10-day stays. It's just the five-acre piece over by the, it'd be the east of the swimming pool. And there's some of it, an alley between that property and the fence of the residents already. And along the back there, we'd like to put eight or 10, like tiny homes, for the longer 10-day stays for the fishermen and the other anglers and stuff like that. And then the rest of it, our initial design is about 53 full hookup spots. I think that'll probably have to go in phases, you know, 20 this year, 20 next year, whatever. And then we would extend Iris, not up onto Paradise, but down through that private or through that property, and then get onto Paradise down closer to the homes, where there's already a curb cut, and it's not controlled by wild dogs, so we could left and right turn, which would then make a full circle there between those two stoplights, going past the swimming pool and Iris also. And those are just initial concepts, nothing set in stone, right? Just brainstorming at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess for the sake of my own clarification, Acting City Manager floor, if we move forward with the vacation and replat, is there any, will Pat need to be coming back to us for any future approvals or anything? Or once we do the vacation and replat, is he kind of free to develop how he sees fit? Okay. I guess while I got you here then, Pat, I wouldn't mind wondering. So in the case, you have complaints about lighting, noise, guest behavior. Do you have a plan in place already about how you're going to, you know, resolve those conflicts or manage those complaints? What does that look like?
I haven't, I don't have a plan yet, but I kind of, kind of do like what they do in the other campgrounds, you know? It's, and there's noise ordinance at 10, so we have to shut off. With full hookup campsites, there's no need for generators, right? You just plug in. So air conditioners might be running, but that's, they're not very loud. We'll have some staff there to secure, monitor the area, you know, 24/7. But haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, no worries, man.
Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, I'm Bert Andreen. I'm here on behalf of Edge Engineering Group, who is doing the plating and the replat, the zone change, and was here to answer any questions, if you had any, from a technical standpoint, although I may be a little bit limited on some of those answers, so.
Somebody have any questions about that? I don't think so.
All right, definitely in support of the project.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? All right, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this ordinance, to please approach the lectern. Anybody to speak in opposition? All right, there being no others to speak for or against the ordinance, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation, final plat subdivision agreement, and zone change for the Valley West Park Edition subdivision.
Thank you. The Chair entertained a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance amending Section 9.44.020, Weapons of the Casper Municipal Code. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Eric Nelson to City Council and Jay Carter Napier dated June 25th, 2025. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication from the Casper Star Tribune dated June 26th, 2025.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, do you have anything to add?
I do, I have a report.
A report, sorry.
So this ordinance amendment will bring our city ordinance essentially in line with the recent changes to the Wyoming state statutes. It's essentially adding one line to make exception for concealed firearms as provided by state law.
Thank you so much. Council will now listen to public comments. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of this ordinance to please approach the lectern. Anybody in favor? Good evening.
Yes, I am in favor. First of all, I want to thank the city attorney, chief of police, the staff, and our great security people here. This upholds our Second Amendment rights. Council spent a lot of time in a work session looking at this. In most evenings, we don't have a big crowd here, so it shouldn't really be a problem in getting everybody situated and through security. So thank you all for your work.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Schriftman? Great, thank you so much. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? This time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the ordinance to please approach the lectern. Anybody in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the ordinance, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 9.44.020, Weapons of the Casper Municipal Code.
Thank you. The Chair entertained a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Any discussion by the council? Anyone want to talk?
So, thank you, Mayor. I'm not very excited about this, and I realize this is something we need to do in order to protect the city, to be in compliance, but... while I was in the legislature, I fought for local control, not statewide governance of the situation, and argued on the floor, I think in my second year, for that very fact. But this, this manner, and I was glad that there was a seminar put on by WHAM, which hopefully doesn't get eliminated by focusing the legislature, that it's in accession, but on our ability to get together, learn some things. But Representative Haroldson, I thought, gave good information to the group assembled. And the Mayor of Pinedale, I felt, did a wonderful job of his version of local control and what he saw as obstacles. I probably will vote no on this, but knowing full well that we need to do this and need to pass it so that we're in compliance, but not willingly, and notably, I did not second. So for that very reason, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Counselor. Anybody else have any discussion? Okay, any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Sweeney voting nay and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of a new resort liquor license number nine. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flor Tremble to City Manager Jay Carter Napier, dated June 25, 2025. Exhibit number two, affidavit of website publication dated July 1, 2025. Exhibit number three, ad proof from the Casper Star Tribune, published on June 19 and 24, 2025.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, do you have a report?
I do. So this public hearing is for the consideration of a new resort liquor license for the Hyatt Place. It will be non-operational until it opens, which is set for October. And there are, there's no limit to the number of resort licenses the city can award.
Thank you so much. Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor, resort license number nine, please approach the lectern. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to resort liquor license, resort license number nine, to please approach the lectern. Anybody in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the resort license number nine, I now declare the public hearing closed. Oh, man, sorry about that, everybody. Jeez. That was a little aggressive, my bad. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve the application for the new resort liquor license number nine, JJM HYTCPR Hospitality LLC, doing business as Hyatt Place Casper, located at 407 North Walsh. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion by the council? Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did have a question, and I'm assuming it's irrelevant, but I noticed several members of the JJM team in the back, and I was going to ask them if they came forward. But, so the question is, and it is a mute issue at this point, but the law contains meeting space for 100 people. And so I was just curious, I'm assuming it passed all the muster with the state, so it must, must be accurate. But it was just a question.
I was looking at both Flor and, and it sounds like that it did.
But, and unfortunately, I missed the tour. I had a conflict that day, but in...
I think, I know I'm getting, I got rescheduled to go do it too. So if you're interested, yeah, you can come on up, absolutely.
I came to support it, but I didn't really prepare anything, I guess. But the, the meeting space max capacity is about 150, so it does meet the qualifications. And I do think we're setting up two other dates for tours, so.
I'll be on one of those.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. Thank you so much. Any other questions, but we have them up?
So, thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
So thank you for coming forward. I think people get reluctant in coming up just to testify on their own behalf. And I really encourage folks on these transfers to, or a new license to, to talk about it, and talk about what, what great good it will do, and look forward to its opening, so.
Yes, yes, we're very excited.
Much appreciated. So, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor.
You betcha. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Any other discussion? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Pollock abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
General, are you getting Amber? Oh, we have one more liquor license. Oh, going to the bathroom. Sorry, we didn't mean to make that public. Is it okay, Eric, if we go forward where we're missing? Okay, absolutely. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of liquor license number 24. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flor Tremble to Jay Carter Napier, dated June 25, 2025. Exhibit number two, affidavit of website publication dated July 1, 2025. Exhibit number three, ad proof from the Casper Star Tribune, published on June 19 and 24, 2025.
Thank you. Acting City Manager, do you have a report?
I do. This public hearing is for the consideration of transferring the retail location from Alibi to the new HomeX building, which is currently under construction. They are set to open in September, and it'll be inactive until then.
Thank you. The council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of retail liquor license number 24, to please approach the lectern. Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. It's nice to see you all again. I am Jessica Homer with HomeX Oil. You know, we met when we rezoned my building, so currently, we are under construction, and I'm thrilled that you guys said September because my contractor's back there, and he's now trying to push me to October, so. Of course, I'm, I'm for the transfer of the license. You know, we've designed this building. We really think that it's going to be beneficial to the community, as well as the old Yellowstone District. We've kept that look. I don't know if any of you guys have driven by it and seen it. It is big, yes. It is big, and it is really nice. We're looking forward to this. You know, we are familiar with liquor licenses. We've got them in other, other communities. You know, we've got two tips trainers on staff. We've never had any violations. You know, it's an off-premise deal for us. We're really looking to really help the Casper community. I believe it's an entrance into your old Yellowstone District, and we really think it's going to be a nice addition. Do you guys have any questions, comments?
Any questions?
Comments?
Yeah. Counselor Sweeney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming up. And so how many square feet is dedicated to the liquor store?
I want to say it's pretty close to around 800 is where I have it. The entire building is about 4,700 square feet, but, you know, we've got a lot of backspace and all that, so.
Mayor, if I could follow up. So will there be any sort of, like a tasting bar, or are you planning on doing?
No, not necessarily. You know, of course, when you get liquor vendors, I think they like to do tastings every now and then, you know, but we are typically an off-premise. We do intend to have, we like to call them slushies, but those alcohol slushies available, so we'll have some, you know, little sampler cups to make sure you get the flavor you want. But otherwise, the majority of our stuff will be off-premise. And any tastings, I believe, will come through a liquor rep, so my people won't necessarily be pouring drinks or anyone like that. We do have the space partitioned off, you know, it's 21 and up to even enter that area. It's a pretty similar layout to what we've done at our other liquor stores. We've got one in Mills, and I'm actually current, under, currently under remodel, at another one in Mills. So we're, yeah, we're really looking forward to it. So, are there any other, anything else I can answer?
I have, have driven by, and the brick facade is really going to dive right into the Yellowstone District and be a great addition, I believe. And it sounds like it's a busy night, and I just see both the, you're over at the County Commission tonight on a development acreage upon the mountain, so.
Oh, I don't know much about that. That's, that's above my pay grade. I don't know anything about that. I'm here for the gas station. But, yeah, no, we're really looking forward to it, and we're hopefully going to be open in September. And, yeah, we, you know, we'll come, this is the last week we have at that location, so if you guys want to come and see it one last time before she's gone, we're tearing it down on the 14th, and our last day in business will be the 6th. So we're going to be gone for a couple months, but they've got to do all of the underground tank work and things like that, so we got to get it going.
Good luck, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, guys.
I just want to say something, since you don't look over here. I'm so sorry. Sorry, it was really, really loud, too. No, I just wanted to echo what Sweeney said there. But it is, it's beautiful, and I just, we drive by every day on my way to work, and so just watching the progress of how it's coming together has been fun, and surprisingly, really fast to me.
Yeah, no, for us, too.
Looking like it's happening, but, no, it's just going to make that area going into the old Yellowstone District that much more special. And so thank you for your investment.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. And after you guys have redone Midwest Street and that final phase three, you know, we're really looking forward to it and hope to mirror your investment, so. Anyway, well, thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. You want to wait till then, or do you want to do, you have a comment to make right now?
No, I can wait.
Are you sure? Okay, all right, yep. Any others who wish to speak in favor? Okay. I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to transfer the retail liquor license number 24, to please approach the lectern. Anybody in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the transfer of retail liquor license number 24, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve the application for the transfer of location and ownership for retail liquor license number 24, from Sunset Operations LLC, doing business as Alibi Bar, to HomeX Oil Sales, Inc., doing business as HomeX Number Three, located at 519 South Poplar Street. Moved by Counselor Sweeney, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any discussion? Counselor Sweeney?
So, thank you, Mayor. So I'd just like to thank Darren and the HomeX operation for everything they do for our community, and whether it's backdrop on the ball fields or sponsorships and the donations, so greatly appreciated.
Any other discussion, comments? Thank you, guys, for your continued investment in the community. We appreciate it. Thank you. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Counselor Pollock abstaining and all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Wait for Counselor Pollock. I think she listens to it, doesn't she? Oh, you text her. Okay, perfect, thank you. Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Amending Casper Municipal Code, Section 12.24.030, sidewalk obstructions prohibited.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read. Moved by Counselor Bond, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Council will now listen to public comment. Does anybody wish to speak to the second reading on this ordinance? Okay, any discussion from the council? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Amending Casper Municipal Code, Section 10.12.030, driver's license restrictions.
Thank you. The Chair to entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Council will now listen to public comments. Anybody wish to speak to this second reading? Any discussion from the council? Yep, Counselor Gamroth.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd be curious, I don't want to put the chief on the spot, but I'm going to, I'm sorry. I was just kind of curious. I think I probably already know the answer to this question, but in my research, I found a few state statutes that probably apply to the cases of a minor using a fraudulent ID. And so my question is, I know in those cases where only a state statute exists and not a municipal ordinance, that person has to be tried in circuit court where the penalties could potentially be harsher. I'm curious, is that the intent of having a municipal ordinance, or are we filling a gap that is otherwise not covered by state statute, you know, 63901 forgery, 63702 criminal impersonation, statute 126101 possession of a false ID by a minor? I'm just kind of curious what the intent of the ordinance is, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for that question, Counselor. Mayor, if I may, excuse me. The intent behind this is currently in state statute, we have single-point entry, so anybody under the age of a certain age has to go through circuit court. If you have somebody that's 18 or above, that could be tried in municipal court, and if they have a false ID, we could charge them through municipal court, but you're not going to have the same T through circuit court, so that answers your question.
Sorry, I'm slow.
No, you're fine. I don't think you're slow.
Everyone's shaking their head like, yep, you understood it. You're totally good.
Mr. City Manager, or, excuse me, Mr. City Attorney, do you have something you want to add to that?
Yeah, Mayor, Counselor. So I would just add that this does kind of bring it into line with state statute. So what we found is that under city ordinance, the individual had to actually attempt to utilize the fake ID to either purchase alcohol or whatever it is. But state statute allows that just the mere possession of a fake or false ID is actionable legally or criminally. And so this is to, in fact, bring it into alignment so that we have the same standards here locally. And as to the chief's comments, if they're in that gap, like 18 to 21, they're not single-point entry. And so if they've got, you know, two municipal charges, and then without this, they have to run the third charge through circuit court, it just isn't very judicially efficient. So this kind of allows us to put them together and expeditiously handle them through municipal court.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up. Sorry, I wasn't familiar with the phrase "single-point entry," but it sounds like specifically for the people aged 18 to 21, like you said, they could have multiple charges, and it would be across two different court systems, whereas a single-point of entry is just handling it all within one? Is that?
Mayor, Counselor, that's essentially correct. With the single-point of entry, any juvenile has to be run through the DA's office. Now, there are times when they will decline to run them through circuit court on a single-point of entry, in which case, our office will get a letter of declination at that point, and we're free to go ahead and prosecute them on misdemeanors through municipal court. That's been frankly, I think, a little bit in flux with the turnover at the DA's office. I think Mr. Jared Holbrook has gone back and is now heading that up. But, so typically, we can't do anything with a juvenile until they have said, yep, we're not going to do anything, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Okay, any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
Vacating Stone Ridge Edition Block One Lot Park as Dedicated Public Parkland.
Thank you. The Chair entertainer motion to approve and adopt on third reading the ordinance just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Bond. Council will now listen to public comments. Does anybody wish to speak on this third reading? Any discussion from the council? Please cast your vote. Or excuse me, amendments? Please record, oh my gosh, please recast the vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
10A1 Approving a Memorandum of Understanding Between the Wyoming Department of Transportation and the City of Casper in Support of Operation of City-Owned Wiolink Towers. 10A2 Authorizing a Short-Term Six-Month Lease Agreement for Radio Transmitter Site Tower USWY5028 between the City of Casper, Wyoming and VBS1 Assets LLC. 10A3 Authorizing a Short-Term Six-Month Lease Agreement for Radio Transmitter Site Tower USWY5008 between the City of Casper, Wyoming and VBS1 Assets LLC. 10A4 Authorizing the Acceptance of a Proposal and a Master Services Agreement between the City of Casper and Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the Motorola Dispatch Console Project. 10A5 Authorizing Amendment Number One to the Memorandum of Understanding Concerning Metro Animal Shelter Services between the Town of Barnum, Wyoming and the City of Casper, Wyoming. 10A6 Authorizing a Lease Agreement between the City of Casper and Mountain Sports Incorporated. And 10A7 Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Waiver of Hearing and Consent to Judgment Regarding a Quiet Title Action Filed in the District Court of the Seventh Judicial District of Wyoming.
Thank you. The Chair entertainer motion to adopt the consent agenda items just read. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Acting City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items?
No, thank you.
Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
11A1 Approving the Purchase of Two Fouts Fire Engines from Sea Western Emergency Vehicles. 11A2 Authorizing the Purchase of a Replacement Pool Boiler for Mike Cedar Pool. And 11A3 Authorizing the Purchase of One New Front End Wheel Loader for Use by the Solid Waste Division of the Public Services Department.
Chair entertainer motion to approve the consent minute action items just read. Moved by Counselor Haskins, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
At this time, we ask counselors to bring forward any relevant concerns or items of interest. We'll start with Counselor Jensen.
Got a couple of things here and I forgot my glasses is what I went to go check for, too. I missed them, right? So I'm gonna do the best here. Let's see, we had a part meeting, a few different meetings last week. It was crazy. I think everything decided to have a meeting. But the part, it is the Art Response Team. We had a meeting just to discuss some policies and procedures and go through a few ideas that we all kind of had. Then I did a tour of the Hyatt, which is going to be beautiful. I mean, even right now, just watching it come together, too, has been fascinating. Their conference space that they have in particular in the upscale clientele that I think that the Hyatt will bring to Casper is a niche that we needed here and I think it'll be filled. So very excited for them to come in here. Let's see, we had the Platte River Revival Meeting and that was pretty much a meeting to get me up to speed on everything they're doing and all their projects that are coming up in the different parts of the river and then meeting the board members. So that was, and all the history that went behind it. That was interesting and fun and learned a lot. Then we also had a Old Yellowstone District Architecture Review Meeting and that was, we pretty much just reviewed about three different businesses down there that had some new signage that's going to be going up, so making sure that it fits within code. See, I do just want to say again to like, thank you to all the small businesses. I know HomeX contributes a lot to our community, but also a lot of other small businesses do invest into Casper to enhance and choose, they choose Casper for a reason and it's enhanced. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that say thank you for investing in your community and bringing out the community engagement through everybody who gets outside and does something fun through your events or your offerings that you have to have. So it's what makes Casper amazing, I think, and fun to be here. So we just want to say thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Bond, do you have anything?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this week, Wednesday, I attended the Natroda Council for Safety and Justice Meeting. Counselor Sweeney was there as well. And it's interesting just to learn about their work and about some alliances and some collaboration perhaps with the city's efforts on meeting the needs of our unhoused population. They do a lot of good work there. Also attended the Public Art Response Team meeting with Counselor Jensen. And one thing that I thought was interesting there, we do plan to come with, the staff will come to you with, come to us with an MOU with the Casper mural project. So we'll be watching for that. And Zulema shared with us that the, there's a plan to put some murals on the Washington Park renovated restroom walls on the exterior. And that's all on that, I guess. And then I did a cemetery tour with Counselor Pollock and Counselor Larson and Counselor Haskins with Dan, the new director out there at the cemetery. Learned a lot about the cemetery and I kind of about what they're facing in terms of just the upkeep and keeping the grass watered and well taken care of in the summer. He told us that, I think he said only about 25% of the park is actually on a timed sprinkler system. So the rest of the park has some built-in or stationary sprinklers, but hoses have to be removed. So it's pretty labor-intensive effort still on that end. So but I think they, overall, there was a section where they were struggling to keep watered because of sprinklers that were not, not in working order. But other than that, I think they were doing a fine job of keeping the cemetery maintained. Let's see, Thursday of this week, there's a, I plan to attend the, there's a community development, Wyoming Community Development webinar on housing in Wyoming this Thursday. So I'm planning to join that webinar. Also wanted to make the council aware, if you weren't already, about the budget cuts that are impacting the senior center. They're looking to the tune of $55,000 deficit in their funding and possibly more, both with federal and state cuts. The federal DOGE cuts have created some pauses there. And I think there's also some legislation that they're waiting on the Congress to approve as well before funds can flow to the senior center. But also I think there's, they're feeling the impact as well, or will be feeling the impact as well of the property tax cuts here, here at home in Wyoming by our state legislature. I want to join Counselor Sweeney in, and again, saying I voted in favor of the change in the weapons ordinance, but I did that begrudgingly. And I think it is insanity to force local municipalities into conforming with state politics. And that's all I'm going to say. That's crazy. But that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
I don't have anything.
Great. Counselor Pollock.
Thank you very much. I would just like to call out the great work of the folks at the Ford Wyoming Center last night. Big concert, it was very full, a lot of, parking lots were full, big security lines, big concession lines, and it was a great show and everything went really smoothly. So everything was, was, at least from the spectator standpoint, operating on all cylinders up there. So it was really, really great. So thanks to them.
Thank you. Counselor Haskins, do you have anything?
Well, they got most of my stuff checked right off my list, but I also want to give props to the Ford Wyoming Center. I am tired. How you guys managed to do two huge concerts in that short amount of time and still be delightful? Props to everybody that works there. Also, I like to show up late, 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 always late. No problem parking. I just want to throw that out there for you, Pat. We were close. I didn't have to walk up the hill. I was right by, no problem parking. And I was worried because I believe last night was sold out. So giveaway of land, whatever. And I also cemetery tours, same, nothing to say on that one, which leaves me to, the Health Department has put out a press release that you can see on Oil City, so I'm not going to read it and waste everybody's energy there, but our public health department does have vaccinations available and they're there to field questions. But yes, Casper does have a case of the measles. And as a healthcare worker, of course, that puts me in panic mode. So just vaccinate your kids pretty please and thank you.
Counselor Sweeney.
I'm delighted you found a place to park. Very excited about that. So it was, I wanted to thank, thank the folks at Visit Casper for the invitation to CNFR and that was a great, great, great show. I felt then, I attended both Thursday and then Saturday's performance in, which was sold out, in which is where I saw a lack of parking in. So, but anyway, then the 20th, I attended as the alternate LGBTQ group meeting. Very informative and kind of went through results of that whole, whole week of different activities. 21st, in case folks didn't notice, was Lemonade Day. We had DCBA for the first time was actually a small, small sponsor, but I think we had about six lemonade stands downtown this year and great activity and it was a busy day downtown. 23rd, I attended along with Kyle, the, and Jenna, the DDA, OID in Yellowstone District and DCBA joint meeting. I thought that was really good. I was late for that meeting. I'd been in Labor Health most of the day in committee meeting and that was interesting. So the 24th, I listened into appropriations and that was also interesting but frightening. The 25th, so the Business Alliance put on a, if you remember, a, an event at the M. And so at that was Eric Protzer with the Harvard, at Harvard, Harvard Growth Lab. And I believe in the presentation, unfortunately, Casper was shown as a regulatory hindrance. I think we scored at 90, 95 percentile. Cheyenne has been more proactive over the last year and a half on reducing regulations. And I believe Carter may have had a chat with them either later that afternoon or on the 26th. But I didn't get a chance to talk to Carter on what their presentation to the city was. But something that I think we should look at, what that presentation about was about, was workforce housing, how to make it easier for developers on workforce housing and not, not a giveaway situation, but how, how we might do things a little smoother. Also, Governor Mead and Governor Sullivan had a really candid and great talk in time to ask questions about previous political climates, today's political climate. And it really was very refreshing. And then attended the 27th, the Logan Wilson banquet, again, at the M. I'm going to guess there were 250, 300 people in attendance. Really was a nice, nice event. I think he had close to 500 kids signed up for his camp on Saturday. And along with, with him was Frank Crum and also a UW player, I believe from Wheatland, but I can't remember exactly, but now playing for the Denver Broncos. So just really a nice event and, you know, nice to see, you know, players like that of that caliber coming back and doing things here in our community and a proud grad of NCHS. And then I just wanted to mention this morning, well, on the 26th, I attended Mountain Barnum at the Hangar. Bill Allamand had put together a meeting about Radiant and, but I left a little early after something was insinuated against me and so I left. But I didn't feel it was very productive, but a lot of good misinformation was given out. And then this morning, had Hall of Justice and Detention Center meeting. And so that, that was good. Hopefully I didn't spend too much money of the, of the cities, but floor was online and the chief was there. And so I think all, all of those things have been pre-approved on the, the communication piece, the intercom, which is now complete, 99.9, I think the sheriff said, up at the detention center along with a few other items. So, and then I also followed up, the senior, the new senior district approved their budget at 10 o'clock this morning. And I visited with their chairman, Linda Blackstone, and there was only positive comments and no, no dissenting like I was afraid of, but thankfully that wasn't. So next is, just want to mention a couple of things. Chalk Art in Central Wyoming Fair and Rodeo kicks off. Basically, the chalk art is Basically, the chalk art is this coming Saturday, starts at 8 o'clock. Quanis will be there on Second Street, kind of in front of branding iron and down that whole block. And then first, I believe it's 300 kids will get t-shirts in, with the winning artists from last year. And just encourage, everything's free. They also give out to those participants free tickets to the rodeo on the Tuesday through Friday, shows and performances. Then obviously, next Tuesday is Parade Day, and that's the real kickoff. Don't miss the demolition derby on Sunday there at the fairgrounds, but lots of activities. The carnival also starts Friday night, this Friday night on July 4th, but Tuesday, it just, I just wanted to mention that after the parade, so it's senior, it's Casper Days. If seniors 62+, get in free, and includes gate and general admission to the rodeo. And just wanted to mention that. So, and finals are on Saturday. And Mayor, I am on the Fair and Rodeo Board, and so I will miss next Tuesday's meeting. We do a security briefing at 5:00, and then, so I, then we, unfortunately, the board is in charge of mutton busting, so.
There you go.
I will not be performing, so, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Gamra.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Counselor Sweeney stated, well, actually, sorry, you were referring to something else. At a homelessness coalition meeting last Wednesday, I don't believe anyone else was at this one, but we had several agencies reporting an uptick of people from out of the state, so definitely something to keep an eye on. The Central Wyoming Rescue Mission reported that 20% of the, 28% of the individuals in June reporting residency out of the state, that is up from the, you know, 15% or so, 20% or so that they typically have. So again, something to keep an eye on. It was the highest number that any of us could recollect. There's few ideas from the stakeholders around the table on what could be leading to that. So again, just, I, I like watching patterns, I like watching trends, so something I'm gonna be watching on, and I'll provide future updates on that. We got an update on the current Y SAC, Wyoming Survey and Analysis Center effort to compile data and provide a report on homelessness in the state. Letitia at Municipal Court reported that from October to May, we had five individuals take advantage of the diversion program, saved 725 days of potential incarceration, resulting in $106,000 in cost savings to the city. So again, just kind of speaking to not only the outcomes, the positive outcomes in getting people into treatment over incarceration, but also the cost savings to the city that we benefit through that program. Mark, who is our regional representative for HUD, he reported that they've lost about 64% of their staff, and he's now responsible for North and South Dakota, so I really appreciate him joining us at those meetings, but he's probably gonna be stretched thin from this point forward, and my guess is he's not alone. And then lastly, I joined some of my colleagues at the Hosier and Ambo concert last night. It was amazing. I would agree. I, I visited a few of the different concession areas, and everyone I interacted with from the staff was, you know, a lot of good customer service, they were very friendly, handled the large crowd very well. I'd be curious, Zulema, do you have any idea how much, how many tickets we sold last night? Sorry to put you on the spot, but. Okay, cool. Well, it was definitely the largest concert I think I've been to there. I've been to Pentatonix, been to Foo Fighters and stuff, and it was, I think it was the largest one I've been to. So, yeah, awesome performances by both, both the bands. I thought the crowd behaved real well. I do want to bring up the fact, I parked at the bottom of the hill. It was a beautiful night, so I thought I would enjoy the walk. I did, but it always, I always underestimate how steep that hill is, but good exercise regardless. I did notice, crossing over Poplar Street from the south side to the north side, well, actually, it was from the north side to the south side after the concert that I noticed it the most, kind of dicey. You know, it's a 40 mile an hour speed limit there, obviously after a heavily attended concert, there's a lot of traffic, and so I was curious what sort of small economical, maybe adjustments we might be able to make. I mean, even just striping across that road to make it very visible that it's a pedestrian crosswalk, you know, adding a little bit of pain on the road, I think would be easy enough and something I would definitely advocate for, potentially even like pedestrian crossing signs. So I, I don't know who to direct that feedback towards, maybe Acting City Manager, but I would love maybe just a small memo or an update on what it would look like to enhance pedestrian safety in that area, because I noticed, yeah, it got pretty dicey last night. People were having to run across the road, and when it's dark outside and people are going 40 miles an hour, that, that turn is kind of blind, and so I would love to see what we can do to enhance pedestrian safety in that area. So Flor, I see you taking notes, I'm, I'm looking forward to getting a.
By the hump.
Yeah, by the hump. So, yeah, looking forward to hearing what we might be able to do in that regard because it was awesome. Not only was the concert great and stuff, but it was so cool to see how many people were utilizing that path, I mean, hundreds of people, and so just really want to make sure that that, people feel safe when they're doing so. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, I had the great opportunity to speak at an event from the nonprofit Homes for Our Troops. If you haven't heard of them, I recommend you look into them. They are a wonderful organization. 90% of the donations go to build homes for our severely injured veterans. One of our Casper citizens and his family were awarded a house, and we celebrated that on Saturday. Staff Sergeant Brian Price and his family will be getting a, a home that is built for him being in a wheelchair so that he can better father his children and get around better in his home. It was a wonderful celebration. I was Representative Lean, Secretary of State Chuck Gray, and a representative from Harriet Hagman's office were also there to congratulate him and his family. So I've posted about it on my Facebook page, there's a link there to their website, so you can check them out and donate if you feel so inclined. It was a great opportunity, and I enjoyed it. Hall of Justice meeting, I didn't make it because it wasn't on my calendar, but we got that fixed today, so I'll be at the next one. So that's all I've got. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just had two swearing-ins. The Fire Department, we swore in 10 firefighters, so that was wonderful, very well attended by family and the Fire Department, so appreciate that as well, and it was a great honor to do that. Also had the honor of swearing in three police officers and two techs, right? Yep, and so it was really a great opportunity, another great showing by supportive staff and, and the Police Department. Both of our chiefs are exceptional, and we're very lucky to have them in our community. So thank you both for the work that you guys do for our community. The next meeting of the council will be a work session to be held on Tuesday, July 8th at 4:30 PM, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, July 15th. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a security matter to discuss. The Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn to an executive session, and at the conclusion of the executive session, to reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Pollock. There are a majority of councilors present, and a motion to adjourn to an executive session has been moved and seconded. This motion requires a two-thirds majority of the council present. Please cast your votes. Please record the vote.
With all councilors voting aye, the motion passes.
A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion.